Good morning. It is now nine o'clock and I ask that you would please stand for the invocation to be given by Pastor Randall McNeil with Radiant Church in McDonough and then if you will continue to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, I thank you so much for the opportunity for all of us to stand in this place today. And Lord, I'm so thankful that beyond just us being here, you are here. Your presence is here. I ask you, God, to fill this room, fill this building, fill this county with your presence. I pray, God, that your will would be done, that your kingdom would come on earth as it is in heaven, in Henry County as it is in heaven. God, we pray for our county council. I pray that you would give them incredible godly wisdom, that you would give them insight beyond their own natural abilities. I pray, God, that you would speak to their hearts and regardless of what they may see or what we may see, what our difference of opinions may be, I pray that your will would be done and that it would bring us together more than ever before and that Henry County would be so united, so committed to making this the best county it can be, that we become an example for the entire state and even our nation. Thank you, God, for what you're doing here in this room today. Thank you for what you're doing in this county. We thank you for your peace that passes understanding, that just rests over this entire gathering today and we thank you that as we leave today, even though this is a government function, it is a public meeting, may we be able to say as we leave today, God was here. Thank you for that. Thank you for the opportunity to call on you and invoke your blessing in this place. We speak of blessing over it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This meeting today is now called to order for the Board of Commissioners and as we begin into our next item, we definitely want to welcome those who are here. See, we've got representations from leaders from the city of McDonough, the city of Hampton, the city of Locust Grove, the city of Stockbridge, Piedmont Henry, the Chamber, Southern Crescent Technical College and the Water Authority and of course, we're always welcoming our citizens. So at this time, we'll move to the acceptance of the agenda. There is one budget, agenda amendment, which is to add a budget amendment for the Board of Commissioners Retreat and that will be placed under the item for the County Manager in Section 14B. Are there any other changes or revisions to the agenda? Yes.
I wanted to ask if you would table item 12B approving the GAAP part resolution for pension.
Okay, we have a motion to table 12B, which is the resolution approving the GAAP core core. Is there a second regarding that?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. Any further discussions or comments regarding that? Yes, I have a question. Is there a recommendation or a comment?
I need more information. I mean, you know, anytime you bring something to the board regarding anything that has to do with the pension, there's a possibility that it can cost the county a lot of money and we have not had a discussion regarding this plan. So I was hoping that we could sit down over the next couple of weeks and get a better understanding of what this resolution means for the county financially.
Okay, thank you. So there's been a second and a motion. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of that motion to table, please raise your hand. All opposed? All right, it will be tabled as noted. Are there any other amendments or changes to the agenda? Okay, here and now, we're calling for a motion to accept the agenda as amended by adding the budget amendment for the Board of Commissioners Retreat and also to table item 12B regarding the GAAP core pensions. So we now call for a motion to accept the agenda with the amendments. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is accepted as amended. We're now moving to the next item, which is regarding the Henry County years of service and we'll invite Ms. Doris Patterson to please come forward to make that presentation.
Good morning, Chairwoman.
Good morning, Board. Good morning.
We have a very special award that we want to present this morning, so I would like to invite retired Chief Joe Kelly to come to the podium and also I'd like to invite our County Manager and Assistant Deputy County Manager to join me at the podium. Chief Kelly recently retired from Henry County after thirty-five plus years of service and we are so proud to be able to present him with this award for his thirty-five years of service and also recognizing his recent retirement. So I would like to ask the County Manager and Deputy County Manager to please present the award to Chief Kelly and afterwards, Board, if you would please take a picture with Chief Kelly, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Take the picture, please. being here this morning, so we say thank you for your services as well. Thank you. We'll now move into item six, which is the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Update and we'll invite up Mr. Miller Edwards with Malden and Jenkins for that presentation. Good morning.
Let me open up something here. Is that where they can see it? Well, while she does that, let me just go ahead and get started. I believe David Smith has given to you all a document that looks somewhat like this.
Correct.
This is what we call our auditor's discussion analysis. What we also have, that you do not have in your hands yet, is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. David has a big block of those waiting to be given to you. If you want to have some good reading, I'd recommend reading this. It's one hundred and forty-five pages. It's some of the best information you could ever have. I am here, of course, to present the annual audit to you all and if you could, let's just go ahead and open up this document that you have and let me just walk you through the highlights of the audit process. That's what this is intended to do. As you open it up, you can get a feeling for who we are, who we serve. The inside page shows all the county governments that we serve currently here in Georgia and in South Carolina. On page numbered one, you also can see what the purpose of today's meeting is. Now this is working up here.
If you can turn up just a bit. Thank you.
Okay. Let me also give you a little introduction about who we are. Again, we're here today to talk about your annual audit. My name is Miller Edwards. I've been with the firm now, I'm in my thirty-third year. I also have with me today Doug Moses, who is a partner with our firm. Doug, where'd you go? There you are. Doug is a partner with our firm as well. He's also a resident of Henry County. He lives just right down the road from here, so he's been helpful to me this past year and working through this audit, reviewing the file, all those kind of things. But again, I want to introduce us in that respect. Again, the presentation today is about the audit. What I want to be able to do is answer any questions that you may have from a general standpoint, see what we can do to cover any details that you might want to know. A little bit about our firm, we're located in Macon, Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia, Albany, Georgia, Savannah, Georgia, and then we're also in Chattanooga, Columbia, Birmingham and Bradenton, Florida. What's that? I'm just pressing right now, that's not working. Okay. We serve a great deal of governments. We serve about four hundred and fifty governments. We serve about a hundred thousand hours of service a year. We also serve about fifty-five counties in total. A hundred and fifteen of those governments receive the same certificate that you all get, which is awarded by the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. For the work that you do to put this CAFER together, this hundred and forty-five page document, you all are recognized as being one of the leaders in the profession for this kind of work. You're going above and beyond the call of duty when you put this together. You're blowing the standards away. You can go to the next one. Just press enter. Enter. Okay. Another thing about what we do to give you a little inside thought about what we are all about, we serve a lot of county governments, as I noted earlier. This gives you a little picture about what kind of county governments we serve. Y'all are right in our breadbasket as far as size and nature. You all average about, you're about two hundred and twenty-five thousand population. These eighteen clients that we've got listed average about two seventy-five and so you can get a little feeling for who we are, what we do, that kind of thing. Go ahead, enter. Additionally, these are other services that we as a firm provide. To get to the heart and soul of what we're here for today is to talk about your annual audit. You all, as the governing board, have a responsibility to make sure that management and that all your department heads and everybody involved is doing the things they're supposed to do to make financial reporting be the best it can be. You've asked us to be your auditors and to come out here to test what management has provided to us and we have tested it and we have now rendered an opinion on your financial statements that are in your CAFER and we do believe that your financial statements do present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, results of operation and all other relevant disclosures for Henry County and of course, all reporting standards that are out there. So that's a good thing, that's what you want to hear from your auditor. Additionally, you all have federal funds that come through and you had about four point four million dollars this past year. We had to do a special single audit on those and that was a clean opinion as well on your internal controls and your compliance with the laws and regulations surrounding those grants, so that's a good thing. About the CAFER, you've been getting this award for about fifteen years. You're one of the few that I can say that about. That's a great thing. There's only a handful of counties in the state of Georgia that get that award and again, you all are one of them. Overview of the financial statements, when we look at your CAFER, and I know you don't have it in front of you, it's a lot of pages, but overview is, it's very complicated. You have all these different sections to where the governmental accounting, financial reporting requires us to present things on full accrual, modified accrual and all kind of other pictures. So what we've got included in your CAFER is you, this primary government, and then you've also got three component units, you've got the Health Department, the Library and the Water Authority. They're also included under the umbrella of Henry County and they're included in this CAFER as well. You've also got a bunch of funds, you know it as well as I do, when you look at this place and you go through the budget processes that y'all are probably just now kicking up, you've got a lot of funds. Of course, the heart and soul of it all is your general fund and I'll talk a little bit about it shortly. You've also got splotch reports that we've issued along with the single audit and again, all the reports that we've issued for this past year are clean, thumbs up on everything. As far as an overview of the county itself, you, the primary government, our large primary government, with about eight hundred and seventy-one million in assets, you've got liabilities of about a hundred and sixty-three million with equity of seven oh eight. If you go out to the right side of that, you can see your component units, which is the biggest component unit, is your Water Authority, it also has a large amount of assets of four seventy-four, offset by liabilities of two twenty-eight for an equity position of two forty-six. So if you look at the county as a whole and look at all the components of the county under the greater umbrella of this government, you're about one point three billion dollars worth of assets of that, about nine hundred and seventy-two million of that is infrastructure, vehicles, equipment, all those kind of hard assets. You've got a net position or equity of about nine hundred and fifty-four million dollars, again, a pretty big balance sheet to say the least. The line that I have drawn in the middle, we go down to the income statement. The primary government that you all are most directly involved with had about two hundred and nine million dollars worth of revenues this year. It spent about one ninety-six for a positive change, if you could go back, get your back space, for a net change of about thirteen million dollars, what you might otherwise in the private sector call net income. In the component units, they also took in about ninety million in revenues. They spent seventy-four million and they had a change of sixteen. At the end of it all, when you take the two changes of those two columns, we've got about a twenty-nine million dollar change, that's a positive bottom line. That's a good thing. I want to reflect on what that means, because some people might sit there and say, why would a government be making money? Why do we make money? I mean, we're supposed to only be taking in what we need. Well, that number is showing you're a part of what you need. If you look at this reconciliation here, you can see the net change, the net income is about twenty-nine million. If you add back depreciation, you add in capital contributions, you've got about ninety million dollars worth of resources that are available to pay about long-term debt and go invest in capital assets, okay? You all historically have had a very large investment annually on capital assets and you look at this past year, you purchased seventy-two million dollars worth of capital assets. You also paid back debt of twenty-six million, so the ninety million that you took in, believe it or not, was actually a little short on an annual basis about what you needed. The good thing is the county is healthy and it had funds from prior years that it was able to use to take up for that shortage of the current year's operations. So I share that again with you, because I want people to understand when they say, oh, twenty-nine million bottom line, why? This is why. You have to have it if you're going to be a government that you've always been, that's been a growing, highly initiating government that wants to do a lot of change and serve its people. To do that, it takes this kind of understanding. So any questions at this point? Anything whatsoever? Okay. The next thing I've got is a pie chart and this is in your ADA that we passed out, page nine, and just looking at it, you can get a feeling for what the revenues are all about. Again, you had over two hundred million in revenues, property taxes are eighty-seven million dollars that you had here. It's a big chunk of what you've got, it's over fifty percent of your revenue stream is property taxes. If you go to the next slide. The expenditures, you can see the big cost there and this is not unusual at all. You all have over fifty percent of your expenditures are in public safety. We're talking fire and police, that kind of thing. I see that anywhere between forty and sixty percent in most counties that I go to. Y'all are right there at about like fifty-four percent, fifty-three percent, so you're right there where you probably ought to be, but it really does, when you put the picture up there, it puts it in perspective what a large slice of pie that public safety represents as it should. Additionally, what I've got is a chart in there that shows you the general fund revenues and expenditures. You can see over the last six years, what we've had in blue is your revenues and what we've had in yellow is your expenditures and you can see for the most part, we've always had a little bit of a cushion, a little bit of an edge in revenues. I think two thousand and fourteen, the expenditures edged out the revenues, but overall, the last few years, your general fund's been growing its fund balance and that's not a bad thing and I'll reflect on that further in just a second. This also gives you a view of the last six years and notice the numbers in green, those are those layers to the fund balance each year that we've had, okay? You've only had one year that you've actually used fund balance and that was back in fourteen where you used it to the tune of six eighty. That was that negative margin I noted a moment ago. Some people would like to ask me the question often, that is, what's the right level of fund balance? And I'm always going to answer it a variety of ways, but my first answer is going to be, it depends. It depends on so many things. It depends on when you're measuring this. We're measuring it at June thirtieth. I bet right now, twelve thirty-one, it looks even better, okay? Because you've had property taxes come in, but I bet if you measured it at nine thirty, I bet you're going to look pretty skinny at nine thirty. So what we've got is a situation that at June thirtieth, we have to take a snapshot of what we look like at that date and are we in good shape as of that date? Are we going to have what we need to cover the cost of the next few months before property taxes come in and are we going to be able to continue with our initiatives that we always want to do proactively? And I'm going to give you a very strong yes, because what you've got for fund balance right now is about seventy-two million dollars at June thirtieth. That's also a very liquid fund balance, meaning it's very cash and investment-based, so you're in a great shape. You've got almost six months worth of reserve sitting there and that's a good place to be at June thirtieth, because you're going to eat probably heavily into that, probably half of that's going to be gone by nine thirty and then you're going to start trying to build it back up again. If you were a community that did not have a lot of growth, if you were a community that did not have a lot of initiatives, if you were a community that actually had things going backwards, like population going out, maybe your fund balance wouldn't be as important. But because you are who you are, because you are a growing community with a great amount of needs and demands on your services, fund balance is very important and I think you all are looking very strong right now. Another good thing about this fund balance that you've got is I reflect back to two thousand and eight. What happened in two thousand and eight? We all lived through it. It was called a recession and you know, the forecasters and economic forecasters are saying that typically recessions are every twelve years. Two thousand and eight plus twelve equals twenty twenty. We're only two years away potentially from having another one of those cycles hit us. Y'all are in great shape to weather that storm. You're so much better shape than the places I was. I went to two different places yesterday. One place I went only had about a month worth of fund balance, okay? They were June thirtieth with one month of fund balance. Another place I went had fifty days of fund balance, okay? And they were all happy because they were actually adding to fund balance, but they're not going to be able to weather the storm if it was to hit us today like you all can. And if you, with your growing needs here and the demands by your citizens for the routine services that you all provide, fund balance becomes paramount to be able to weather the storms and continue with your initiatives in the proactive way you always have. So I think you're in good shape right now. You know, that's my answer to the question I usually get, how does our fund balance look? So this gives you another perspective. You heard me mention about seventy-one, seventy-two million is your fund balance. What I've got in the red line is your expenditures of what you've had for the last six years. Notice they have been going up. Unfortunately, that seems to be the trend in life, costs go up and your expenditures that you've been spending the last years are going up, but your fund balance has been growing at a good pace too. And when I look at that one thirty-nine compared to that seventy-one, two oh five, that's that six months, you've got about half of your operations in reserves. That is a great margin to have right now. That's a super place to be. Again, there's that hundred and eighty-seven days. When I looked at how your fund balance compares to your expenditures, you're in great shape and again, it's a very liquid fund balance. That's another super thing. Sometimes I'll have clients that have a good, strong fund balance, but it's all made up of receivables and receivables that may be slow in payment, so it's, you know, yours is what I call a liquid fund balance. That's a good place to be. You've also got other funds. I've talked all about the general fund for the last few minutes. You do have a bunch of other funds, as you know. You've got a lot of special revenue funds, you've got one debt service fund, quite a few capital products funds, you've got several enterprise funds such as the airport, things like that. You've got a bunch of fiduciary funds, all your constitutional officers, they're included in here, your tax commissioner, your clerk of court, sheriff, all those different parties that are overall part of the government are also captured in this audit. So again, this audit is very all-encompassing. We've also got, I mentioned earlier about the single audit report and it was clean. We also did what we call the yellow book report. We have to audit your system for your controls and your compliance from general standpoint. Everything was good to go there. We don't have any particular required communication to share with you all. What I mean by required communications, if we had a major league disagreement with management, I would have to tell you about it. If we had to go outside ourselves and go get a consultation for some guru up in Washington, DC, I would tell you about that. I'm happy to say we had no matters this year that warranted a required communication to you. We did have a couple of management points and they are just management points. Let me make that real clear. We have no findings. We have nothing that needs to be reported in a special report to you, but we do have several management points that we would recommend. One of them has to do with accounts payable. Accounts payable is something that I would stress to you all needs a better cutoff right now. You all, I believe, were basically looking at July and August and kind of using hindsight to roll back with period thirteen closeout. You might need to extend it further, because we found adjustments that need to be made as part of that. Why were the adjustments needed? You need to work within your system to have people that when they receive goods or receive services, that they file receiving reports and get them filed with the finance department and make them know that we've got a payable in process. Unfortunately, that's not always working. I know y'all are going to a new system and I'd be willing to bet that's going to be one of the unique elements of the system and we just want to make sure it is going forward. Another thing we talked about, it was the accounting for group health insurance. Right now, your group health insurance is a very large and growing cost in the general fund and other funds. What we would like to recommend to you all is the potential of pulling that out, because right now it's kind of buried in there, pull it out and go to another fund called an internal service fund where you can more separately monitor and manage that activity and not have it buried in the general fund. You're not doing anything wrong. I don't want to say you're doing anything wrong. I just think it might, in lieu of how large this has become, you might want to pull it out and separate it from all other general fund activities. Your call on that. The law library, we did have a situation with segregation of duties. You've got one person out there, he makes all the deposits, keeps the bank register, signs the checks and reconciles the bank statements and I think most everybody understands that's probably not a good segregation of duties. You don't have a lot of funds running through there, so I don't think it's going to be something that's going to create a material misstatement, but it is something that I wouldn't want you to hit the newspaper if at all possible. So again, those are three things we wanted to recommend to you. As far as new standards, there are a bunch of new standards coming down the pipe. The Gatsby that writes all the pronouncements for your financial reporting is not slowing down. They have got several out there that are going to affect the county, including fiduciary funds, that we've got to look at how to report the fiduciary funds going forward and they've also got one out there about leases and right now, the way governments are, the way commercial entities are, when you have an operating lease, you don't have it on the books, you just have it as a general expense. Well, now they want you to put it on the books as an asset and determine what that fair value of that asset might be, even if it's only for twelve months of a use and they want you to put the liability on there as if it was long-term debt. That's going to cause governments like yourself to have to go back and revisit all the different lease contracts that you have out there and determine what we need to put on the books or not going forward. That's going to be effective in two years and again, I just recommend y'all go ahead and be proactive on addressing that. That, we're almost to the end. The last thing I want to say is we do author a lot of newsletters. We also provide quarterly CPE. Anybody that's a client of ours, including the board members, are welcome to come to our quarterly CPE. It's governmental, so it's not about the IRS, you know, no ten forty kind of rules. We're all about governmental in our segment of our firm, but we do have so many new rules and regulations and changes going on that we have for the last ten years now, since March of oh nine, offered continuing education to our clients on a quarterly basis. We've actually held it here at the county a couple of times. We try to move around and use different client sites and we have about a hundred people come per quarter to these things. You all are welcome to join us on any given subject that you might want to attend. If you'd like to know more about it, this young man right here, I'm sure can get that information to you and put you on our mailing list and we'd be happy to include you in any of those kind of correspondences. And with that, I'm going to close and see if you have any questions. Y'all have been very quiet, so.
Well, thank you for the presentation and so at this time, we'll open the floor for any questions or comments from the board. Any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Barron?
I'd just say it's a great presentation and it's great to hear we're in the financial shape we're in.
You're in excellent shape. You really are.
And I just have just a couple of points to note. Again, we want to commend the whole team that have actually worked to make this happen. Just to get this type of financial award from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is major. It is good to hear the confirmation that Henry County is in strong financial position. I will tell you, when I'm out at ACCG and other meetings, I carry the PAFER with me, the Popular Annual Financial Report and other counties are oftentimes, can I have a copy of that, because they're very impressed with that. So again, we say thank you for the review of that. You did address all of the concerns, questions that I had through the presentation, so thank you for clarifying, especially those regarding the management points, so I appreciate that. All right, is there anything else for the good of the board?
Let me just close by saying, I only live about thirty minutes away. If any one of you all ever want to get together just to talk, call me up and I'll run by here. I come up and down this interstate probably three days a week going somewhere and I'll be happy to come visit with any of you all or come back and visit with the entire group again, if you have any questions upon looking at the CAFER itself, so just give me a call.
Thank you and we would like to get a copy of your presentation, by the way, so thank you, Mr. Edwards and again, kudos to the team for helping us to be in such strong position. We'll now move into our next agenda item, which is regarding the consent agenda and all of these items are considered and then before we take a vote, we'll see if any of the commissioners would like to have it removed for further discussion. The first consent agenda item comes from our Henry County Police Department, which is a resolution accepting donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from Tanger Outlet Center and approved- Outlet Center and approval of a budget amendment. The next resolution comes from the Technology Services, requiring a resolution for approval for a Verizon easement agreement. And then we have two from the Parks and Recreation. One is a resolution accepting donation of a playground equipment valued at twenty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars from Home Depot to use in the Parks and Recreation Department. And then the other resolution is to accept a donation of ten three-wheeled trikes valued at five thousand dollars from Chick-fil-A Corporation to use in the Parks and Recreation Get Fit Therapeutic Program for special needs adults and children. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Here at non-C and non, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? The consent agenda is unanimously approved. We're now moving to our next item from our financial director, Mr. David Smith, regarding the financial update.
Good morning, Chairman Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board.
Good morning.
Henry County Commissioner. Community. I have before you the monthly financial report for the month of December. This particular presentation is going to cover the financial report, SPOS, and our budget development calendar, which we're about to get into. We're now, one half of our fiscal year is complete. We've collected seventy-five percent of our revenues and expended forty-three percent of the budget. This is in line with the prior year, no cause for concern. We've also begun working with the departments in developing preliminary numbers for fiscal year twenty. The next slide is the financial report, which is up before you. It's important to note on this slide that we've collected seventy-five percent of our revenues. If we continue to collect and spend at our budgeted rate, that means we're going to spend the final ninety-two-point-nine million dollars, I'm pointing toward the bottom of the slide, over the next six months while only collecting forty-point-three million. I pause to let that sink in, because the point is that that fifty-two-and-a-half-million-dollar difference is going to have to paid out of our fund balance over this period of time. The next slide is a graphical representation of our status. This is our year-over-year slide. We're year-to-date actuals versus year-to-date prior year. We are in line with our prior year for revenues, slightly over in our expenses, but that's primarily due to the implementation of Tyler Muniz this year, which we actually went live on Monday. I think we went live on Monday, so for those of us that were ready to get rid of the S-400, we're very excited about that. The next slide is the month-over-month. That's year-over-year graphical representation. Next slide, you went back. Fund balance as of December twenty eighteen. You see a large estimated fund balance there, eighty-three-point-three million dollars. I point back to the first slide, where we're going to be spending over fifty-two million of that number over the next six months, because our collections are going to be tremendously less. Next slide. We continue to trend better than budgeted SPOS revenue collections, better than the average that we had predicted, and our SPOS expenditures are beginning to increase as the project's work begins to continue. This concludes the financial report of my presentation. What questions do you have?
We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions regarding the financial update? Commissioner Holmes.
What are we doing with the excess SPOS dollars collected? And I'm assuming you mean over what was projected in two thousand thirteen? I think it was one-ninety-two.
So the one-ninety million that we projected to collect for this year? You want to know what happens with the excess?
Correct.
We're supposed to utilize those funds for the continuing projects, and then if they don't go back into the projects, that's, we're supposed to then adjust how much we charge our citizens in their tax rate.
So how much are we?
But each year, each year that goes into the various SPOS bank account, and we try to finish those projects that are supposed to be for that basic year. So let's say we had SPOS five project that we didn't complete, those SPOS five dollars is supposed to be used for that project until it is complete.
I have a question for the county manager. Can you let us know how much we're over in terms of projection and how are we going to reallocate those dollars per district?
So, and I guess, Angie, if you could put the slide back up, it actually, I think on that slide, it may answer your question, Commissioner Holmes. David is absolutely correct in terms of, and I hate to call it excess, but we are collecting over what our projections were for each month. And so really, there's not any excess until you've completed all of the SPOS projects that are on our tier one and tier two. Take a look at that slide and see if that'll answer your question. But if you look for twenty, and it doesn't actually give that information, so I will need to get that to you. But I can provide an update on how much we've collected over our expected projections.
Is that it? Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
So I know that every time you've made the report, David, thank you that you've talked about the excess, and it's back to the question that Commissioner Holmes is saying. So we do have an excess, because we have collected more, and I know from our SPOS projects, there's never enough money to complete projects. There's never, you know, invitation to get money out of the excess to complete those projects. So we must have some excess somewhere. So I would like for you to get back with us and let me know where that excess is, the total amount of that excess, and if any of that excess has been used for projects that we're not aware of or have been used for anything.
When you're asking for where it is, are you asking for it by district? Is that what you mean by where it is?
Like, if it's twenty-eight thousand dollars or twenty-eight million dollars that's over, where, what budget would that sit in? What account is that sitting in? How's that being used? Why isn't it in our fund balance? Like, you know.
So it sits in a SPOS bank account. We have to make certain that we keep the SPOS bank account separate from our regular general fund bank account.
But you know the amount that's in there now?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the amount that's in there?
I can get that back to you.
Okay.
So Commissioner, if I could, I think part of the reason you're seeing some sort of deer-in-the-headlight look from staff is, when we refer to excess SPOS funds, that has a specific legal meaning. And what it really means is, at the end of SPOS, if all of your projects are completed and there's leftover money, that's really what those in the industry refer to as excess SPOS funds. So today, you don't have any excess SPOS funds from your current SPOS. You have, you certainly appears that you have revenues exceeding your projections. And I think, I think, I just want to make sure staff understands that, and that y'all understand, really what you're looking for is, I think, the sort of the unexpected revenues that may not be allocated to projects yet.
That's correct.
And I just want to make sure we're all talking the same language.
That's, that's correct, but I want to respond to Commissioner Clemmons's question regarding the bank account balances.
Yes.
So in the SPOS two construction, there's four-hundred-and-sixty thousand. SPOS three checking, three-point-eight million. SPOS three, our money market accounts, eighty-five-hundred dollars. SPOS four fund, four-point-seven million. And of course, because the MMAs don't earn a lot of interest, and SPOS four MMA is three cents.
So when Rocky, when they presented, they said SPOS one is complete, or SPOS two is complete, and there's excess, then does that continue to accumulate, or what happens?
If you're defining the excess as what's remaining in the cash balance, you're supposed to utilize that amount for those projects, unless we come before the board and something changes. But by referendum, you're only supposed to use it for that particular SPOS project.
Correct. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, anyway, come to Commissioner Barron.
So I guess the question I'm asking, so in SPOS four, we had a specific projected cost per project. As you know, costs have risen over the last number of years. So if I have a project that we projected out at three million dollars, but that project is ten million dollars today, we can't use the excess SPOS to, you know, pay down on the extra, you know, the extra cost of that particular project?
Yes, during any, during SPOS four, funds can be shifted from one project to another, absolutely. And we do that pretty routinely. We bring, I think, I think SPOS brought a resolution, maybe the last meeting, or is it, I don't, is it today? I remember where there's some road projects that were finished, there's money left over in those project accounts, they're being shifted over to finish another project account. That's absolutely permissible.
Last question. Is there a possibility that we can use the excess on road resurfacing?
You can certainly shift any funds that are available or left over from projects that have been completed to other projects. So if you have a project in District Five in which we projected that the project was going to be ten million, it was actually eight million, that two million can come back to the board and you can move it to your resurfacing account.
But we're talking about, we're talking about funding that we've collected that's over and above and above the cost.
Let me see if I can clarify, because there's really, there's really no excess funding until the SPOS program is completed. Keep in mind, we have projected that we're going to collect a certain amount, I think it's one-ninety, hundred-and-ninety million?
Hundred-and-ninety million.
Hundred-and-ninety million. And until the SPOS program ends, you may have months where your projections are much higher than what they were from previous years. But until you've completed the program, you don't know that you're going to have any excess funds.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, you still, okay, Commissioner Barron, and then we'll come to Commissioner Clemmons.
I think he kind of answered my question, but I, the way I'm thinking, we did the SPOS four is, is we kind of underdid a lot of the projects, because we didn't want to put too much money in those projects, knowing we were going to probably have excess money. And I, too, have been thinking all along that, that when we got to a certain point, if we collect a lot more money, then that would be divided up into the districts, like Commissioner Holmes said, that we could use that in resurfacing projects, because I've got a lot of roads that need to be resurfaced.
Well, keep in mind, your SPOS program is a six-year program, and so you may be having an excellent, you know, for the next six months, you make your collections maybe very high. You think about during November, December, that's when people are out shopping, and so your SPOS projections are going to always be higher during those months. But then there may be two or three months that we may not collect based on our projections. And so I don't want, I don't really like using the word excess, because it's not excess in terms of how we're looking at it. It's not excess until after the program has been completed.
So are you saying the total projects that we had was a hundred-and-ninety million? Is that correct?
And let me correct.
And that's minus the cities?
It's actually for the county, it's one-forty-two-five. And if you look at the slide that's up on the overhead projection, we've only collected one-twenty-two-four. So there is no excess, because we haven't made it to the one-forty, until we get to the one-forty-two-five.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
Correct.
And I would like to say, I understand for this SPOS that we're in now, SPOS four, that we haven't reached that, and until we do, there's no excess. Got it. My question is, I would like, not today, but at some point, I need you guys to go back and look at the past SPOS, and let me know if we exceeded or met our collections and if there was excess. And I would like to know from one, two, three, and four is obviously where we are now. That's number one. Number two, I know that we have a right to abandon projects in SPOS that are not feasible. So there may be some projects in one, two, and three that were not completed, that we as a board may decide to abandon, so those excess funds can be transferred over to complete SPOS, the present SPOS. And let me tell you why I'm concerned about this, because we have another SPOS coming up. And what happens so often in SPOS is that we project an amount, and I know that's been an issue with District Two. Where's the amounts on these projects? Why don't you put the amounts? You can project an amount in two thousand nineteen, and the SPOS doesn't get done until two thousand twenty-five, and the amounts have changed. So there are regulations, and Patrick, I know that you know this, in the SPOS that allows us not to have to put specific amounts, but to just name projects under specific things. And we need to figure out a way financially, how do we make these SPOS go faster? How do we go ahead and get the money upfront and the SPOS? And I know the financial people here, David, you know how to do this, that we go out and build these things out, so we're not waiting six years on these things to happen, and then we're not underbudgeted for SPOS projects. We have to start thinking more on a financial basis of how we do that, because it doesn't make sense to put five million dollars on an amphitheater in two thousand nineteen that's going to cost ten million dollars in two thousand twenty-eight. So I just want us to, you know, this is a good conversation to have about that. So please keep that in mind. But I do need the report on the excess.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Very good discussion, and we'll look forward to the next discussion regarding past SPOS. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? This was an information only, so thank you much for the good conversation. Okay? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now invite up Mr. Dante Gibbs, our Planning and Economic Development Director, to discuss the resolution award and the proposal for master planning of the Atlanta Speedway Airport and the Henry County Megasite.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
The item before you is a resolution to award a proposal for master planning of the Atlanta Speedway Airport and Henry County Megasite. At the current growth rate of two-point-five percent, as you know, Henry County is the second fastest-growing county in the Atlanta metro region. Our population as of August twenty eighteen is approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-eight-hundred residents, and with our growth, we have also become more diverse. And so in our diversity, it is deemed as a strength of ours, and we are endeavoring to capitalize long-term on this strength. So initiatives that achieve a prosperous and steadfast economy are essential. Therefore, in order to establish a policy guide for the development of Henry County, we recently completed the update of our Comprehensive Land Use Plan that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners October sixteenth, twenty eighteen. Our Comprehensive Land Use Plan is our guide to investments, developments, and the allocation of services. And our Comprehensive Land Use Plan is also a unique tool that guides our decisions with three distinctive features. The first is looking ahead five, ten, and twenty-five years. The second is looking across many different facets of what our county does. And the third is looking to understand the needs and desires of Henry County. So this update addressed policies, data, our short-term program items, and affirmed the collective land use direction for Henry County. And one of the most essential tasks in all of this includes master planning, and the overarching goal of Henry County to be an innovative leader in the Atlanta metro region in our planning efforts. For the purpose of long-term economic development in Henry County, we have designated six-thousand-plus-or-minus acres west of Georgia Highway nineteen forty-one in unincorporated Hampton near the Atlanta Speedway Airport. Also, this property is west of the Norfolk Southern Railspur, and this site, this six-thousand acres that I just mentioned, is deemed our megasite. The goal for the six-thousand, give or take, acres of megasite is to become a major employment and mixed-use destination within the southern part of the Atlanta region, anchored by the Atlanta Speedway Airport. If the resolution before the board is approved, the chosen consultant will be responsible for master planning the entire six-thousand-plus-or-minus acres deemed the Henry County Megasite. The scope of work will include branding and marketing strategies, viability and implementation, feasibility for potential tax allocation districts along nineteen forty-one, Highway eighty-one, Highway forty-two South, Fairview Road, Jodico Road, and/or Highway one- Fairview Road, Jodico Road, and/or Highway one fifty-five South. The master planning of the megasite shall include the feasibility for potential community improvement districts, mainly along I seventy-five and Highway nineteen forty-one, but will also include other potential CID locations in the county like Highway one thirty-eight. The master planning of the megasite will also include an infrastructure assessment specific to the megasite and also, and a proposal for the Atlanta Speedway Airport FBO. Outreach to property owners of the megasite area is essential and necessary for the success of this major initiative and would be an intricate part of the scope of work. The essential strategies and policies that must be a part of the master planning of the megasite are, one, to encourage mixed use within sites and buildings; two, create great public spaces and thoroughfares with well-balanced, fiscally sound infrastructure investments to promote reliable trips; three, encourage parking management strategies; four, ensure existing business and retail vitality to extract new businesses with community, attract new businesses with community partners; five, function as a multimodal hub; six, limit warehouse distribution development; and to, number seven, promote high-end, advanced manufacturing, biomedical, pharmaceutical, technology, commercial, filming, and music developments. Having said that, proposals were solicited for master planning of the Atlanta Speedway Airport and Henry County Megasite. Four vendors responded and were reviewed and scored by an evaluation committee through the Purchasing Department objective process, the highest scoring consultant being the selectee. With that said, staff recommends approval of the resolution before you, awarding the proposal for master planning of the Atlanta Speedway Airport and Henry County Megasite to Tunnel Spangler and Associates Incorporated, also known as TSW, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. It is my understanding that the funds are available for transfer from the county's insurance premium tax revenue savings instead of general funds. Our Financial Services Director, Mr. David Smith, will be following me to a formally request of the Board of Commissioners the needed transfer of funds. And with that said, I conclude my presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Um, I see already we have a question from Commissioner Holmes.
I just want to thank, um, thank you Dante for mentioning Highway one thirty-eight. As you know, we've been trying to, um, um, get a CID in that area for a number of years at this point. I just want to ensure that, um, whoever makes the motion, that they include Highway one thirty-eight as part of that motion.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Clemens?
I just want to also commend staff for getting us to first base with this whole nineteen forty-one corridor. I've been talking to Sherri, Johnny has went out to Newton County, and Gary's been over there to the airport, and the whole board up here. I mean, we are on the way, and I think we're at first base with what's going to happen on the nineteen forty-one corridor. But even more specifically, um, nineteen forty-one has had decades of challenges. Um, we've had delays from being in real estate crunch, and just nothing has been happening over there. Um, and the mayor of Hampton and the city council of Hampton has worked graciously with us to talk about what do we do in that area. I think we tried to do a LI, uh, LCI a couple of years ago, and I've really, um, and I think I'm one of the only commissioners that have all four cities in my district. So to be able to work with, um, the city of Hampton and make this happen has been tremendously great. This development, we're looking to have a successful development, not just smart growth, but a successful development in this nineteen forty-one corridor. So Dante, I, I kept saying that I was hoping that we could say the Henry County Speedway Airport Megasite, because we want to make sure that we capitalize on the branding of that Speedway. This is our opportunity to show the metro Atlanta area and the state of Georgia that Henry County can get there, um, with this project. We've got, um, we've been talking to the property owners in that area. Um, our borders of Hampton is right there in the area, having conversations with Hampton about how do they participate? How do we make sure that their businesses are enhanced? Um, and the TAD is super important. Um, our Tax Allocation District, I know that we were down at the Capitol last year trying to get this TAD done. So, um, just for the public to know, that the TAD gives us an opportunity to attract investors into our community and to invest their dollars into our community. And so having the TAD there is great. And then we include the CID. And I definitely do not want to leave out one thirty-eight. Um, I've had some conversations with, um, Mr. Elroy, with City McDonough, about how do we work with our SPOLOX dollars with McDonough? We've got Hampton involved, we've got Locust Grove involved, and then one thirty-eight will help us to bridge the rest of, um, our community, um, together. So I just want to commend the staff about that and make, see if we can make that changes. And, uh, the key pieces are locking together with the county, uh, with the Economic Development Department with Hampton, uh, with the, uh, property owners at the Speedway, the Speedway is involved, and all of the large property owners over there. So we're looking forward to the official Community Advisory Committee getting together and making this, um, megasite what it should be. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
Dante, how many landowners are involved in the megasite?
I'm sorry.
Landowners are involved.
We sent out correspondence, uh, to as many landowners as our tax assessor's site would allow mailing addresses, and right now we receive fifty responses total.
Okay, so they, they, they are going to be, how are we going to get them involved with this? I mean, if you don't get the responses from the rest of them, how they go, how are you going to get them?
There are a number of avenues that our consultant will take for the community outreach to make sure they are, that they are, um, stakeholders in this process. So whatever means there are, whether it be community forum, newspaper, social media, um, commercial, whatever it may be, there will be budgeted funds and what's allocated to, um, this consultant to do the community outreach. That's part of the scope of work and the requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just like to say, also, the TAD is on here that includes, um, Highway eighty-one, Highway forty-two, um, the south Fairview Road, Jodico Road, and Highway one fifty-five. So that TAD, so if we could work together and get note, that TAD will include all of those options, so that would be great. So we'll just kind of have to reach out from commission to commission to those cities about how do we tie them in.
All right, Commissioner Barn?
Dante, have you had any conversation with the development authority on this project?
Yes, we have. They've been very intricate in this, and we will have further discussions as well.
Very good.
And the board should look for the five hundred and fourteen acres that's part of the airport. Um, I know the development authority, um, has been having conversations with hotels for that area. If you notice, there's no hotels on nineteen forty-one, and I, they created a full package, I guess, last spring to kind of attract hotels to this area. There was a conference call that our county manager had with some hotel owners. So, uh, this could be really big for the county.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, we're hearing none. Um, the floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we would, um, accept this resolution with adding, um, Henry County Speedway Airport Megasite, um, for the branding purposes, and also if we could include one thirty-eight, um, on the CID.
Let me on the TAD.
On the, on the CID.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, oh, I see, okay, very good. Okay, any other, okay, so we have a motion with those modifications. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we'll now move into our next resolution from the Financial Services Team, and it's regarding the, um, the matter that we just spoke about. So welcome back, Mr. Smith.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board and the Henry County community. Dante did a wonderful job in presenting his megasite. Now we have to fund it. So I come before you to present, uh, asking for a resolution authorizing a budget amendment for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, to increase the planning and zoning there professional account for the Speedway Airport Megasite Master Plan in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. A little bit of background before that. Is the county received more in insurance premium tax revenue than we expected? And so we'd like to request a portion of that insurance premium tax be utilized to fund the megasite master plan.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you for the explanation as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now, um, invite up, uh, Mr. Rocky Romero to discuss the resolution authorizing the Stormwater Department to solicit proposals for professional engineering studies for various dams, including Lake Cindy, Lake Dow, Estates, and Swan Lake.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Stormwater Management Department is requesting, as you mentioned, Chair, an approval to solicit proposals for engineering services to evaluate dams. The dams to be evaluated are category one dams. These dams are those which, if breached, could cause loss of life and catastrophic personal property damage. The dams to be evaluated are Lake Dow Estates, Lake Cindy, Swan Lake. The selected engineer consultant will evaluate and provide remediation action by providing a design plan for any proposed repairs. I will take any questions from the board this time.
Okay, thank you. We've heard the presentation, so are there any questions or comments? Um, Commissioner Thomas?
I have a question. You have identified three Pacific lakes here, I mean dams here. Have you, or do you have the number of dams that are actually in the county that needs to be looked at beyond category one?
There's, there's approximately about, what is it?
Twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty-two to twenty-five.
Twenty-two to twenty-five.
We'll get you the exact number on that. As classified as category ones.
But these Pacific ones are the ones that are most severely damaged at this point in time?
That is correct.
That is correct.
And could you explain category one for those who may not understand what category one means and why these particular ones are being discussed in a, you know?
Yeah, so, like I mentioned before, so if category one dams means that there's something below the dam, it could be a property, a dwelling, that if the dam breaches, the dwelling can be in jeopardy. So in this case, these three dams, I think there have been a lot of concerns. So we want to make sure that we start the process, at least to start with these three. There are more. So we need to set up the, how are we going to be looking at the county at these dams, category ones? And if this works, then we can go back and, you know, start looking at the other dams as well.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
In addition to that, will you be putting together a process to use to evaluate the other dams? Because I can see other people coming forth determining that they want their particular area looked at as well. And we need to determine which are privately owned and which are publicly owned as well. Will you be putting together a process that consistently be used to evaluate, uh, what the county would do in, in helping support the renovation of these dams?
We will, and we'll, that will be part of the consultant to put a package together regarding that as well.
And additionally, would you also ask this consultant to determine what can the county receive back in some type of, um, um, usage of the area if possible in the renovation process? Because if we are investing in these dams, and some of them are privately owned, there needs to be something coming back to the county for the dollars that are being invested in these particular properties.
Correct, we'll, we'll do that part as well. And that'll be like the next phase as well, uh, maybe phase three. This is the first phase. The second phase will come back to the board with a selected consultant.
Okay.
Uh, once we have that, then the consultant will be evaluating this, this dams, and then we'll have to come back again for the board to see what can actually, and we can get, get the consultant to give us some feedback on how to do that. But at the end of the day, be the board commissioner to determine how we're going to proceed, because they are privately owned dams.
Thank you. Commissioner Clemens?
Rocky, can we just add that, um, if, if in the one of the whereas is somewhere where it says that these are the category ones or any others that may come up as an emergency or something, just to do that?
Just to cover the other ones.
And that way, if something else comes up, you don't have to bring it back, it's just all included?
Uh, yes, we can do that, and we'll add that to it.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barn?
Uh, yes, I just want to make a comment. I, I appreciate colleagues, uh, asking the questions, and that's something we do need to address. This first, this is just the first phase of this thing. We actually going to use, um, the engineers, and I'm, I'm assuming we're going to reach out to safe dams and, and ask people that's affiliated with dams. And I know the water authority has several dams in the county. Maybe they, you could reach out to them and just have a conversation with them about dams, and, and, um, and, and then once we get those, uh, those things done, we'll know what it's going to cost, and we'll know where we got to go. But we do, uh, take pride in this, and, and we're actually can be the, uh, set the bar for the whole state of Georgia with this project.
Okay, you done? Commissioner Holmes?
Rocky, can you also, um, make sure that, um, we include local engineering companies in bidding process?
Yes, sir, as long as there are, like Commissioner Barn mentioned, you know, we have to go through the safe dam, make sure that they, they have done this type of, uh, work. You know, we want to make sure that they're, uh, well, well, I know, well,
Of course.
diverse on, on dam, uh, design.
Okay.
Commissioner Holmes, you done? Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
I, I'm glad you said that, Commissioner Holmes, about, um, local engineers. But even more than that, I would like to know if we can add some type of process that, once we, um, bid it out, that not only would we look at the qualifications coming in, but there's some form of an interview? Um, because a lot of times with this type of project, we award based on price, and they may not be the most qualified. And I think when we're talking about the loss of life, and we're talking about something as strenuous as this, qualifications need to be based on qualifications and not the lowest bidder. Um, I think that's why we have a lot of issues in our counties now with SPOLOX projects that we've done that come back and have issues because we go by price. And I think that it's better for us to spend money to save lives in our county than to go with the lowest bidder. So if the board will not object, I think we really need to look at most qualified for this project. And, and ongoing, we, that's something we need to change in our policies, we need to look at that. This, this, we don't need to go with the lowest bidder on this project.
And, Commissioner, for this, we will not do a price. It will be a, uh, QBS, a qualification, performance-based. So this will be set up as a RFQ, so Request for Proposals, based on quality. There will be no price, no cost associated. Uh, we'll have a committee who will evaluate the proposals. We'll grade the, each, uh, committee will evaluate, give a grade to the proposal based on the, what the information in the proposal. Of course, there has got to be information in there regarding that they've done this kind of work. And, uh, and then the highest score, then we'll get a, a price or a cost.
But I would like to say, and Sherri, just from an engineering perspective, um, if our selection committee doesn't understand engineering, that could be an issue. So I'm really, really wanting to stress that staff look at this, uh, make some type of changes in our process of selecting. We do not want to get a company that comes in and build or prepare, repair something or do something, and they don't have the expertise that we need, and we're back in the same shape. And Patrick, I know you understand exactly what I mean by this. So I just want to make sure that we're looking at qualifications versus price. Even when you put out qualifications and you said, well, all of these people are qualified, it's still going to come down to price. And so there's a, a, a qualifications base based on price selection, and I think we just have to look at that on this, okay? So a little bit more into it than that, Rocky.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas?
Rocky, would you please go over for the sake of myself and the audience how you plan to either advertise this, that you're looking for this? What mediums do you use? What sources do you use to put this out to the community that you're looking for, um, an engineer of this type?
We'll, we'll go through the purchasing department. And the purchasing department, they'll advertise, of course, on the county website, and also on the G, on the state.
ACCG.
ACCG, so, and a lot of the consultants are already tying to those, uh, to the ACCG. So as soon as it goes out, it sends them an email or notification that their proposals are requests for, for Henry County.
Okay, and I'm going to assume that the purchasing department will work with our communications department as well?
They do.
Uh, to make this easily found and easily accessible to everyone? And, um, I definitely want to follow with you on Sherri about that. So it won't be hidden somewhere on page ten that nobody will find, but easily accessible?
Absolutely, and I know David's walking to the podium, but I do want the board to know that all of our bid documents and purchasing bids that are out are on our county website. If you go to the, um, purchasing department, it's very easy. It's a link that says open bids. And so what we also try to do is if there are local engineering firms that may not be on our list of, um, teams that we send information out to, we will reach out to them and say, hey, there's an opportunity for you to bid on this, um, proposal. If you're interested, here's the information. So again, what we've done in the past, if you all know of firms that are interested and that are local, send them to our purchasing department and that are local, send them to our purchasing department so that they can register as a vendor, and that way, when things come up, they will automatically be notified, because we do want to make sure that we're getting the information out, and I don't want anyone to think that it's a hidden process, because we do want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to submit a proposal and possibly be selected to do the work. One of the things we talked about at a staff level when we developed this resolution was possibly awarding it to multiple engineering firms so that we would give others an opportunity and not just one firm be the firm of choice. And so that is something that we will certainly talk about internally, but we also want to make sure that we do get the information out. So I receive the information, and we'll make sure that it is visibly available for those that are interested in submitting a proposal.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, here are none. The floor is now open for a motion for this resolution.
Chair, I would like, first before I make a motion, I would like for Patrick to kind of just get this wording straight. We've had a couple additions that two commissioners here wanted to add, and I don't have any problem with that. If you'll kind of tell us what we need to do.
I think you can just.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the resolution as presented with the following additions.
Adding emergency dam repair to the list.
Was that the only one?
No. And the qualification.
And the qualification, it was going to be qualification.
Okay. I make a motion to approve this resolution with the amended conditions.
Okay, and we got a second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move to the next item from, yes, regarding our human resources, a resolution ratifying the consolidated human resources policies as of February the 5th, 2019.
Good morning, Board Chair Wood. Employee policies were last ratified in 2008, and as you all are fully aware, that they really should be reviewed and updated on an ongoing basis. So what we've done is we've had several policies that have been updated in the last year or so, and we've consolidated those with the 2008 policies indicating the ones which have been updated during that time into one document so that we have a consolidated employee policy manual that we can post and disseminate to our employees. I've presented you with this document, and if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, so are there any questions or comments from the board on this? Commissioner Wilson?
I would like to make a motion to table this as well because of lack of information to the board of these policies.
Okay, we have a motion to table, is there a second?
There is a second.
There is a second, all right. Any further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Clements.
Forrest, can you make sure, and I know you do this already, when you do the update, there were some updates that were made in the House during session about some pay for, I think, family leave acts?
Yes, ma'am.
There was a couple, so I don't know who's watching what's happening on the state level from a legislative standpoint, but just make sure that those things are included. I think we've talked about one of them that was done a couple of years ago.
Yes, and it is in here.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So make sure we're keeping up with that, and so that we're making sure that we're on board with the state.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then I would just have one comment, since it's going to be tabled, that maybe we also talk about how frequently we can expect these updates. I know it's going to be a continuous thing, but the board needs to receive a periodic update, so if you'll present that next time as well.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, any further discussion or comments? And the motion was to table, so all in favor to table. Okay, it is tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item 12B was tabled as noted in the agenda amendment, so we'll move now to item 13, which is a resolution approving a budget amendment and bid award for the construction of Campground Road at State Route 155 in SPOS 4.
Good morning again, Chair and board members. Campground Road at State Route 155 is an approved District 3 SPOS 4 intersection improvement project. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department, bid number 19-20. We received 12 bid, 12 seal bids that were, and that were received and reviewed. The lowest bid came from pavement construction at $859,709.15. A budget amendment in the amount of $543,493 is needed for the construction and utility relocation. Staff recommends using Lake Dow Rogers for that additional funding. Again, this is all District 3 funding, still within that original set amount set up by the districts on SPOS 4, so no excess at all, or there was, there was some discussion before. So staff recommends approval of the budget amendment and also the bid award for construction of Campground at 155 to pavement construction. I'll take any questions at this time.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Here are none, seeing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, the resolution passed unanimously. We'll now move to the next county manager item, which is a resolution authorizing the impact fee use.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This morning we bring to you a resolution designating the use of impact fees. As you know, in 2003, Henry County adopted an impact fee ordinance. During that time, impact fees were used to, I guess, maintain or enhance the quality with the growth of the community. Since then, during our capital improvement planning process and allocating funding process, we have found that there's a few of our line items for impact fees that have been designated only for debt reduction. However, since the recession, there's been times where debt reduction has been less than the amount collected, and I'm talking about our recreation fees that are being used to pay for Nash Farms, Nash Park debt. We found a considerable amount of funding in that line item, and we would like permission today through resolution to open that up for, it is not restricted just for debt services, so we can use part of that funding to go towards our capital improvement plan that we'll be presenting next meeting as a funding mechanism for some of your parks and park projects. For example, there's two point, over $2 million in that account that has not been touched in many years for any improvements to our recreation facilities. It's been only debt service reduction, and we found that once the debt services are paid, that money has been left in the account. So today we're asking for a resolution to approve or to open up that, them line items and the impact fees to be used other than just debt services that could be used for capital improvement funding.
Okay, we've heard the presentation, so are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Clements.
Patrick, I have a legal question. If this is opened up, can it be split among the districts? Because what I don't want to happen is this just to be a, open up more money and it's free willy for capital projects.
So your impact fee ordinance as it exists today does not divide the county up into any type of service area, so the funds can be spent anywhere within the county on those specific items for which those impact fees are designated. So if the board so chooses to divide these proceeds up by district or by area, by neighborhood, you can, there's nothing to prevent that from happening, there's nothing to require it from happening either. So it's really up to the board how you spend those funds. It would be better, and we've had this conversation, it would be better, I think we would all prefer to see your impact fees more localized, that impact fees stay within the area.
I think that it would be more, better oversight if it's split, because if it's not like that, and I'll use this as an example, Commissioner Holmes goes and say, I need, you know, all of it, and he works it out with the county manager and the assistant county manager, you know, it may happen, so I think.
I promise, I promise Commissioner, yeah.
So I would like to suggest, I would like to suggest to the board that it's more oversight if we know that the money is split evenly, we know where it's going, and if you need some extra, come ask the other commissioner, but I don't, I just would like to ask the board to consider that.
Commissioner Clements. If I could give some recommendation from staff that we're looking forward to present, I guess, our next meeting, first step is to get it open. This has been a lengthy process of trying to find legally how to do this, and me and you have talked several times over the last six months, and we've been to ARC, we've been to make sure we're doing it right because of the funding for the debt services. One of the things we believe in, it should be service district specific, because that impact is impacting your district where the fees are coming, so we do believe that. We also want to tie that to our capital plan, so if you have a master plan for your district, and these funds here can go to your districts for your capital improvement plans for recreation in that area. So we're hearing you, and we're actually, are ready to present that at the next meeting with our capital to say, this is here, part of our improvement plan that you guys develop and approve, not that we're going to go spend the money, you guys will approve your plan. You can take stuff off, put stuff on, but that's a funding revenue that now we can put on there as part of our chart roadmap to success that we have a funding mechanism to get there.
And I think, I think it's advantageous for us to have it split evenly, because if you bring a plan and all of the improvements are in Gary's district, then it's too much politics to have to worry about, I need you to support this, I need, let's just divide it evenly, and then if there's a project that another commissioner needs more for, or the other commissioners have money, you can work that out. But I think to do it evenly is just less politics, is more transparent, and I would just hope that the board will see that we need to divide this evenly instead of just putting it in one big bucket and everybody just can go behind and make deals.
So let me make sure I'm clarifying.
And I have a comment as well. Well, I do definitely respect each district, but I also believe that we've got to be able to work together and not always focus on districts. To split it evenly, you know, I just think that we need to grow past districts and some discussions, but we do definitely need some oversight. I do agree that we've got to start thinking big picture, just like we've done today. There's been some items that have been in the district, but it really impacts everyone, so I just do agree that we need to have some oversight. We definitely need to be able to remove the politics and think definitely across the county.
And Madam Chair, you're exactly right, Commissioner Clements, this is nothing that we prepare, the capital improvement has to be voted on by the board. It's not that we come up with a improvement plan, you guys, well, we do it, because I hope that we could take some of our facilities and the experts and what they do, use their advice, their recommendations to put the plan together, and you guys can take off, put on, this is not a priority anymore, and approve the plan. What we would like to have a roadmap of what the, what the plan is, what the projects are, and use part of this, and you'll see next time, we need to, how to get the capital projects to achieve in result for years to come down the road.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve this with adding that the funds be split among the five districts.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Any further discussions or comments?
Madam Chair, can I have a question before for clarification?
Sure.
Let me make sure, Commissioner, on the, on the motion to split this funding moving forward, do you want it split by district as it's collected? Because I heard both things earlier about service districts stay, stays where for Patrick. So I guess I want to make sure I'm not, I'm hearing, I got clarification so I can get the.
What are you, what are you asking?
You made, you wanted the amendment to say split evenly. However, before, with the Patrick saying the local money should stay local, so if districts, the service districts collect the money, they should stay in that district, that's the impacted district for growth. Are you saying this split evenly moving forward?
Well, I would, let me say this.
Okay.
See, for District 2, that would not be a problem because we have a lot of growth.
Okay.
But for District 1, that might be an issue if you don't have a lot of growth, but there may be things that he wants to do, then his budget is not, it's not fair, we have, our chair just said we got to think about the whole county.
So I'm hearing countywide.
So District 2 shouldn't have more than District 1. I think that we take the whole amount, and then that way it's evenly.
So keep the countywide district, and you guys will determine list off the county.
No, all of it will go into one pot.
That's countywide, that's countywide.
Yeah.
Yes, that's countywide, okay, I hear you, I'm clear now.
But the money is split between all the districts, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. I'm with you.
Well, that's very contradictory.
What do you mean by countywide?
Yeah, so please clarify.
Yes, so I'm reading it, the money comes to one pot, one account like this now, but as it's collected, it'll go five ways.
Okay.
I'm clear.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second, and again, the clarification is that there will be this, the funding will come into one, but then will be split evenly between each district according to what has been discussed. Are we all on the same page?
Yes.
And this is very specific, the use of impact fees has already been defined.
I have.
So it's not like we can just come up and say it's a legal binding amount of money that, and how it has to be used, so we stick with the law and we're good.
We're having some discussion to make sure, we were making sure we had our districts right. We're already a countywide district, how we determine how to split the money out, pass that countywide collection, we're good, and we'll make sure we're right.
Okay.
And I'm very clear on the amendment.
So if it's split evenly between each district is the motion that's on the table. There's a first and a second. So any further discussions or comments? All in favor? All opposed?
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the next item, which is regarding a budget amendment for the Board of Commissioners Retreat. We invite up our county manager, Sheri Matthews.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. Again, thank you all for amending the agenda this morning to add this additional item for something that I'm really excited about, our upcoming board retreat. You all should have a package in front of you, which is a resolution which is authorizing a budget amendment to transfer funds from our contingency unallocated to the Board of Commissioners Professional and Food Account to facilitate the Board of Commissioners Retreat. I've spoken with each of you all and/or provided information regarding what the retreat will look like. It is a two-day retreat, but it will also consist of an additional six months of coaching to make sure that the strategy and implementations that are identified during the retreat are accomplished. So if you all have any specific questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Sheri, this is under the threshold, why is this coming to us?
Well, it has to come to you all because the $16,000 is not included in your budget, and as the county manager, I don't have the authority to do a budget amendment. I can do transfers from line item to line item, but not a budget amendment, so the funds aren't available, so that's why.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
I want to support you for putting this together for us, it's something we definitely need, and it would give us an opportunity to set a clear vision for the county as we move forward, so I certainly am happy to see it come forth. It is a great investment to do this, it's very common for other agencies similar to ours to do something of this nature. I'm looking forward to this being a regular line item on, in our budget going forward as well.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Here are none, the floor is now open for a motion. I make a motion to approve this. A motion, there a second.
Second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to come down because I'm the next one that's on the, on the agenda to present.
I just want you to know that I'm really excited about the board retreat because I agree it's going to help us to help take the county to the next level. I just want you to know that over the last couple of years, I have really listened to you, been listening to the citizens, listening to the cities, business community, and what I've been asked to do is to present a vision, and this is a vision of unity, and that's why I want to share with you what this vision looks like. It definitely respects each of you and your districts, and it's also a question of how can we move continuously, yes, to respect your district, but to also think across the county as well. So I will begin with this video presentation, I ask that you please listen to what is stated regarding the vision, and then I have a couple of other comments to make to us all, so thank you.
I am June Wood, and let's talk about Henry County. We live in a great community, and over the last two years, Henry County has prospered. Hundreds of jobs paying above our median income levels came to Henry. The unemployment rate decreased from 36.4% to 3.4%. Our property values increased on average 16%, and they're expected to rise another 10% this year. We currently have more Georgia Department of Transportation projects underway than any other county in the state. We're making progress on so many fronts, and Henry is prospering. As Chair of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, I see and welcome a bright future for our communities and our families. Indeed, Henry County is one of the 10 metro counties that make up the metro Atlanta area. Areas in Henry County are becoming key regional districts, and moreover, within Henry County, we see the development of regional clusters characterized by different types of businesses or services that will define how Henry County will grow. North Henry County is blossoming with significant medical technology potential with the development of the Fairview Health. of the Fairview Health and Wellness Corridor. Additionally, the region emerging just west of I-75 from Eagles Landing Parkway to Jonesboro Road is an area that has become an excellent opportunity to become a medical office district. There is an educational zone in McDonough with modernized Henry County schools, the Academy for Advanced Studies, Southern Crescent Technical College, Mercer University, and Clayton State University, all to help provide a work-ready employee base for our growing companies and businesses. The Academy for Advanced Studies is already well-established around Georgia, and with these anchor institutions, this area can provide educational opportunities for all of our Henry County residents. Henry County still has lots of opportunity for smart growth. Mega sites are available for significant development, affording convenient access to a nationally recognized racetrack and access to an international airport, setting us apart from other parts of metro Atlanta. The area around the Atlanta Motor Speedway, for example, is one place where hundreds of acres of property can be developed for many years to come. Also, west of I-75 near Jodico Road has the potential to become a major entertainment hub with major hotels, eateries, offices, and shopping for tourists and family fun. Embracing and working with the development community, Henry County can more accurately steer our future into a vibrant community, providing jobs, housing, entertainment, and commerce. Furthermore, as with the rest of metro Atlanta, Henry County is characterized by growing logistics and manufacturing industries. We are fortunate to have great businesses in Henry County. International, national, state, and local companies make up our diverse industrial and manufacturing economy. Freight is an integral part of Henry County's economy and has significant impacts on the transportation network, and these companies make up 17% of our tax base, and commercial properties, they make up an additional 19% of our tax base. Well, manufacturers like Luxottica call Henry home, and Luxottica is the world's largest producer of glasses and sunglasses. They employ over 1,000 people, and we are honored that they chose Henry to locate. National company KL Outdoors, which is the country's largest kayak manufacturing, is investing $8.3 million in opening its new manufacturing and distribution facilities in our community, and it's creating 100 new jobs. We're also proud of Home Depot and many others that have high-tech distribution centers right here in Henry County. The median individual worker income in Henry is about $35,000, and our top 10 largest industries in Henry pay much more. Transportation and warehousing workers on average earn about $50,000, while manufacturing jobs average about $61,000 annually, and wholesale trade position incomes, they average about $56,000. We are truly blessed to have all sorts of good-paying companies in Henry, and we're excited for what is ahead of us. Henry County is 322 square miles and has enough opportunity even for green space preservation and agricultural revitalization. The eastern and southern regions of Henry County are characterized by natural beauty, which draws outdoor recreationists, 4-H clubs, and families reconnecting with nature. Moreover, the county should promote recreation opportunities near current parks such as Nash Farm and its reservoirs such as the Tussahar Reservoir. Douglas County recently acquired 900 acres of land to protect their quality of its drinking water source and to provide active and passive recreation for its residents. Well, Henry County can look to do the same to provide options for its residents. Also, while the core area of the county will be developed, we need to ensure that the existing agricultural areas remain agricultural. Why not revitalize the agriculture to inspire our students and eat more healthy? As we develop our land uses, we must overlay our transportation needs now and for the future. Yes, we must continue road improvements, especially along major corridors to ease traffic congestion, and yes, we must identify transit priorities, especially for the future. Jonesboro Road with its entrance to the I-75 express lanes has the ability in the future to become a transit hub within Henry County. While this area, as well as the potential rail line in the western part of the county, can become key transit lines connecting Henry County to the region. For all of this to work effectively, we need local fixed routes that can get our workforce to major employment hubs, local entertainment, and to biking and walking trails safely and effectively. I commend the great people and organizations dedicated to making Henry County a place to be admired. We need to pursue more public and private partnerships to improve the quality of life for our families, especially seniors and children. We need to strongly consider a business conference center or even a Henry Energy Center. We need an aquatic center or YMCA to benefit our seniors, youth, and the medically challenged citizens. We must consider attracting family-friendly entertainment options so that we will remain and support our own county. With all of our growth opportunities, it is time to approach the issue of the poverty and homelessness population in Henry County. We need a transitional housing facility with services that will help our homeless families get back on their feet and become stable and self-sufficient. The vision I have for Henry County moves us past county and city districts. It moves us to cohesive functional regions within Henry County. It's a vision for unity for common goals. My vision requires the county, the city, and all other agencies to work together to ensure that Henry County continues to move in a positive direction with one voice. Together, we must keep the focus on public safety and health and improving infrastructure and smart growth. We already have joint county and city's transportation, transit, and comprehensive land use plans. Well, these plans now need priorities for roads, transit, network, trails, and sidewalks. We have to agree on countywide priorities, especially for the upcoming SPOS V referendum and the next Atlanta Area Transportation Improvement Plan. We must develop a joint county and city legislative agenda to have a strong voice at the state and federal level. We must take the recently approved comprehensive land use plan and develop a joint county and city economic development and family entertainment plan benefiting all of Henry County. Henry County, it's critical that we have a positive collaborative leadership that will continue to engage with all of our citizens to build a stronger and prosperous community now and into the future. Together, this can be done sooner than later. Together, we will make Henry County better.
So board, over the last two years, I've worked with you, and again, we welcome Commissioner Thomas, and there is so much strength on this board. I've witnessed it, and I just ask again that we continue to take these talents that you have, that we have to help lead the rest of those that are here. That's why, again, I reached out to as many as I could from the cities and every authority that we have, because this board is the one that needs to help set the direction for the county, and that we do need to continue to develop cohesive opportunities. And so that's why I'm so excited about the board retreat, including me. I've got to do better in my communication. I've got to continue to do better in my leadership, and I'm willing to do that. And I'm asking that we, again, look beyond not just your districts, but think across this whole, this whole county. Those skills that you have, and we each have different strengths, can be used to benefit the whole county. So I just ask for that. But there are some things I wanted to share, even with those who are you who are from the city. The good news is, if you can put this up, please keep in mind that we just approved a comprehensive land use plan that is supposed to be here through 2020. The decisions that we are making today are going to impact those 10, 20, 30 years from now. So that shows a bit of where the industrial is and where it needs to stop. It shows where mixed use is, and even where the residential and so forth. So please keep in mind that this is something that our citizens have given us input to and that we just approved as county and cities. The next thing I want to remind us about, there has been a comprehensive transportation plan, and this was county and cities. It speaks about all of the major corridors that need to be addressed. It even identifies specific roads that need to be identified, and fortunately, some of those are already in the transportation improvement plan, but they are way out. And there is some that are even 10 to 20 years out that we need to figure out, how do we, as one voice, begin to accelerate those? That is one of the major issues that our citizens are asking about. And then here, you can't really see that really strongly, but there, even with the comprehensive transportation plan, there was a transit feasibility study that basically stated and outlined where are the propensity areas of where transit should go. And yes, there has been a fixed route that is under pilot, but we've got to think about that across this county and to think into the future, especially as we want to have a voice at this ATL, which is a regional link from wherever you are throughout the metro Atlanta area. We right now do not have any transit projects identified in the regional transit plan through ARC called Concept 3. We've got to identify those things, and we've got to be able to speak it with one voice. Now, I thought this was interesting as well. You can't see it, but this is a, it came too from the comprehensive transportation plan. This is a recommendation of the network trails for the whole county, connecting all the way from Panola all the way out through Henry County. So what have we done with that? We've got to identify the priorities to continue to move forward. And then this, I thought this was interesting. This is an infrastructure item. This is an opportunity for Henry County to strengthen its broadband. If we're going to continue to talk about professional services and high-tech, and also to plan for autonomous vehicles and electric vehicles, these are all of the things that we've got to begin thinking about, even though we're not in the best shape, but we've got an opportunity to be even stronger as we continue to move towards all of the opportunities that we're talking about. So as we think about the future and what can we do together, one of the things that I do understand is that no matter what we want to do regarding economic development, it's going to take a cohesive leadership team. It's going to, it's going to cause us to have to come together, whether we're a city, whether we're commissioners, whether we're a development authority, hospital, Board of Education, Water Authority, and whoever else I've just forgotten. But it's going to take that in order for us to move sooner than later. We can continue to operate in our silos, but it's going to take a little time, and we don't have time. We've got citizens that need us to operate. You know, we just heard from the financial guy a few moments ago that we may be on the verge of another economic downturn, and during the downturn, it was the commercial and the industrial that was able to survive and actually sustain Henry County. That's why it's exciting to hear about the mega site that we're talking about, more commercial, more industrial. But again, in order for an economic development process to work, the base of it is going to be the key and the leadership in a cohesive collaborative leadership that is going to help us to set strategy, identify services, set the marketing, and also get the benefit for our citizens. We're here to serve. So here's my call to action. Again, another call for unity, and I see those of you who are sitting on the Board of Commissioners, my colleagues, as the key champions to kind of help us move forward. Yes, I would love to see us in our board retreat to talk about how we're going to partner up, who's going to help us lead through a countywide economic development plan to talk about, to continue to monitor the mega site, talk about the business conference center, of course, and I would even add that we need to even talk about inland ports, because I'll tell you, there are other communities, when I'm sitting down there at the ARC, there are other communities north of us that want an inland port, and if they do, and they get it, it's got to come straight through Henry County in some form or fashion. But then on the comprehensive transportation projects, we right now have some projects that are in the transportation improvement plan, and our goal is to make sure that the money stays in there and that those projects stay on schedule. Hear me again, we've got to make sure that the projects stay in there and that the money is on, and that the project is on schedule, but we've also got to figure out how we're going to accelerate some of the other major projects that are now setting out six years from now. How do we do that? One voice and identify those major projects. But again, we've got to talk about transit and what those priorities are. We've got to identify a sidewalk plan throughout this community, because our citizens, they don't know whether they are crossing over into a city jurisdiction or whether they're in a county. They just want to be safe, and they want to get where they want to go. And then, of course, the multipurpose trails. Again, I think there has got to be some initiative to help us focus on technology and broadband initiatives, and then, of course, I would say that we've got to continue to think about countywide public safety and health priorities as well. And then, as we continue to think about what we want for our children and our seniors and our families, yes, we need to come up with a combined effort to identify family tourist attractions. So the call to action, and that's why, again, I invited you all to be here who are not Board of Commissioners, but if you are community leaders, y'all, let's join together. Let's collaborate and let's improve our communication. That is something that I've got to work on, obviously, we're going to be working on when we have our board retreat. So that is the call to action. And so as part of the other part of the board, I ask that we think about this, and I called it a proposed vision, because if we don't have a vision, the people will perish. And I'm going to commend each one of the district commissioners who've got a vision for their area, but let's see how we can pull all of that together for a countywide vision so that we can continue to think about where we are now and where we're going to go. So what is the proposed vision? To be the safest, most peaceful, and prosperous place to live, learn, work, play, and pray for everyone. We've spoken about the change in the demographics and the growth. Yes, we're at 234,000, but we're going to be predicted to be about 350,000 by 2040. And again, the decisions that are being made today is going to impact that. So how is a proposed strategy? Yes, let's continue the focus on public safety and health. Let's continue to talk about infrastructure, and more importantly, let's do, as I heard earlier today, not just smart growth, but good quality growth that we're all proud of. So again, I just ask for a call to unity for all of us. Yes, the county is doing good, I think the cities are doing good, but how can we do even better? So this is my presentation to our Board of Commissioners, to our cities and other agencies, to our citizens, and again, just asking that we continue to rise above what we see in the rest of this world. There's a way that we can rise and be a perfect example for the rest of this world as leaders. I will stop now and ask if there are any questions from the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
So we will now move into the public comments section of our agenda. Are there any public comments for this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two, John Page and Robert McNally.
Okay, Mr. Page and Mr. McNally, as you come forward, we just do get this time of the agenda to give our citizens a chance to voice their concerns and thoughts, and again, each of these individuals must sign up before the meeting begins and will be given five minutes. So at this time, if you will please state your name, please note we will not ask for addresses anymore, just for public safety, but if you will please just state your name for the record, and you will begin your comments. So thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman and the members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to come forward today. I'm calling, coming forward.
Your name again.
John Page.
Thank you.
Coming forward as far as help to represent two communities as far as regarding a very major safety issue as far as between the area of Turner Church Road and Elliott Road, the Emerald Plantation and Garden Gate Estates. Presently, as far as, just to give you some background, I've been there, lived in that area of Garden Gate for 10 years, McDonough. I've had 50 years of transportation experience as being also a certified accident reconstructionist. Okay, so some of the information I'm going to come forward, I know from practical experiences. The traffic issue right now is, in the past 10 years, as you look on your list that I've got there, there have been 146 accidents between Turner Church and Elliott Road, and in that area, we're now going to have an excessive amount of traffic crossing Turner And in that area, we're now going to have an excessive amount of traffic crossing Turner Church as far as because of the closing of the Elliott Street Bridge over the Walnut There's approximately 58 to 68 school buses that cross that intersection, those two intersections, I should say, per day. And the speed limit and the notification as to reduction for safety for that intersection are totally negligent. It's a limited sight area in curve, and the speed exceeds state and federal regulation for that type of a curve. I'm looking as far as for the state to come in and make a change, I've been working a little bit with Gary Burnham as far as to get something established, but something has to be done before we have a major issue. And I just want to say, I want to leave this thought in your mind. When are we going to take and do something before there is a school bus that gets broadsided with our children on it? 146 accidents so far, 25 this year, and those are accidents that exceed $500 in damages. So there are others that aren't even be reported. The board needs to work on something. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any questions?
Not at this time, thank you. It will be duly noted.
Morning, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Robert McNally, and I'm here just for a procedural reason. I work for Law Office of Charles Watwood. We have a client who was injured by a county vehicle last year, and I just need to present anti-litam notices to you, if I may. I've already presented one to Attorney Jogstad, and if I may, just present one to each of you as well.
If you give it to the county clerk, that would be good.
Okay, and that'll be all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. So I think that concludes our public comment. Okay, so at this time, we will now move to the approval of our minutes for the January the 22nd call meeting and also the January 22nd regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Were there any changes or revisions to the minutes? Hearing non, we now call for a motion for approval.
So move.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any further comments? All in favor? Thank you. The minutes are unanimously approved. At this time, we'll open the floor for any Commissioner comments. Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. And excuse my voice, I am fighting this hot, cold, hot, cold weather. But it's very important that we hear from you and know what it is that you want us to work on. And I make that statement because I've heard several people stand up and say that our comments make no difference, we're wasting our time here, and that's not true. I get emails every day, I get phone calls every day. Now remember, I can't answer them all at the same time because it's one of me and, you know, thousands of you, but your emails do make a difference, and your phone calls do make a difference. And when we make these decisions, especially myself, we are taking the time to talk to our department heads during research to try to make the best decisions for the county. So I invite you to please take the time to read the same exhibits that are available to you online that we look at as well, and understand that we're here to work and serve this community. And in light of the presentation that the chair just made, and in light of the fact of my short time here on this particular DS, my observations from watching our county grow, it is obvious that we do have to have a plan that pulls us together to work together as a county and to make sure that we're working together as cities. So I will continue to reach out to cities. I have already, I have done that, I'm on a calendar finally to meet with some now, but I want you to know that I am a team player, and we will find a way to make sure Henry County continue not only to just grow, but grow smartly, and make sure we're putting in our area what we need for economic development for our children. So help us in that process, and there again, thank you for being here. When we go to our retreats and what have you, it won't just be have coffee, it will be to put a strategy together that we can bring back and tell everyone, Henry County is moving in the right direction. We thankful for our finance department that's given us positive numbers. Now, we are here to make sure we use those monies in the correct fashion for you. Thank you.
Commissioner Clement?
On February 6th this week, we will be hosting the third annual District 2 Town Hall meeting. So I think we've had record-breaking numbers in the past, and we expect the same thing this year, so please come early. We'll have coffee from 6:00 to 6:30, and then we'll go into our town hall meeting at that time. I give the District 2 citizens an opportunity to ask questions. It'll be a regular town hall meeting session, we'll give an overview of what we've done the last three years, what we have to look forward to from a District 2 perspective, and have the residents to ask questions. I think the next day is our SPOS meeting, which will go into District 4, but there was some unsatisfied information for District 2 SPOS that was there, so we want to make sure that if anybody's there from the SPOS department that we can answer those questions. So staff, I would just need you guys there as usual, fire department, police department, and we'll pass out the regular information that we do for our district.
Okay. Any other comments from the Commissioners? Okay. I too want to just commend our board. I just see so much greatness here, and I'm just real excited, again, about this board retreat. It is truly indeed an investment, and it has not just a day, but a long-range plan to help us, to help the citizens now and into the future. So I am just ecstatic about what's going to come out of that over a period of time. I do want to say thank you to those of you from each of the cities, development authority, water authority, hospital, chamber, just looking forward to at least sharing what our board is going to be sharing on how we can align better with priorities for the greatness of our great county. So thank you again for being here today. All right, so at this time, we'll see if there are any county manager comments?
Just one comment, and David did allude to it in his presentation. We have kicked off our FY '20 budget conversations. The department heads have received their initial budget package, and we will be scheduling meetings with the entire board to discuss your budgetary needs for the upcoming budget cycle. I would request from the board that if you have any specific conferences, training, or any other things that have not been included in past budgets, that you go ahead and send that information to Michelle Weaver so that she can capture all of that information, and then we will have a joint meeting of the board to go through your budgets. And that's all the comments I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. So as a reminder of upcoming meetings and events, on February the 19th at 6:30 PM will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and then on March the 5th at 9 o'clock is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Just a reminder, SPOS committees, SPOS 5 committee meetings are still ongoing. On February the 7th, in District 3, there will be one at 6:30. All of these meetings are at 6:30. This one will be at the Heritage Senior Center. On February the 28th in District 4, it will be held at Timber Ridge Elementary. In District 5, on March the 7th at Cotton Indian Elementary School, and then one on March the 21st at the Henry County Administration Building. So again, all of those meetings begin on Thursdays as stated at 6:30 PM. So at this time, do we have anything for the executive session?
Nothing today, no.
Okay, so we have nothing for the executive session, so we'll now move into our final item, which is to call for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. All in favor? Thank you. Have a good rest of the week, everyone.